All right, do we have all the council members? We do. We have the mayor and we have the livestream and the police chief, solicitor. All right, let's call this meeting to order. Call to order the meeting of Narberth Borough Council for April 21st, 2021. And Mr. West, I'm going to ask you to lead us in the pledge as this is your final meeting with us. And Mr. Westboard will hold up the American flag.
Very good. I am still here. I just turned off my video since I was having connection issues. So I will maybe turn it on for the pledge. I pledge allegiance.
Allegiance.
I have the flag.
United States of America.
Americans.
To the republic.
For which it stands. One nation.
Under God.
Under God. Indivisible.
Beautiful.
Liberty.
Justice.
For all.
Thank you. Couple of comments. I know we've got some storms coming through the region. If anybody loses power and gets kicked off, I encourage you to rejoin using your phone. And if your phone is not fully charged, I encourage you to start charging it. Hopefully the storms have passed through, but you know, forewarned is forearmed. I want to thank Mr. West again formally for his service to the borough for five years, almost six years now. And especially for his role in taking on the role of interim borough manager these past few months. It's a difficult role in a lot of ways. And Matt, you dove in and you grabbed it and you are the kind of individual that can only do it, right? He can't have to it and we very much appreciate it. And we will be sorry to see you go and we wish you the best of luck in New Britain. And Ms. Bryant, as skilled as she is, definitely has big shoes to fill. And you will be missed. Thank you. With Mr. West's departure, we will have a four-week period without a borough manager or an interim manager or an assistant manager. And I want to communicate to the public that we have been working on a transition plan with the borough staff, making sure that essential borough functions will be covered by staff and that chains of command and contact points have been distributed and circulated and discussed so that the essential functions of the borough government will continue. I think that probably my hope for a successful transition is that the biggest frustration will be to the council members of which, you know, and the mayor, seven or eight of us who interact on future-reaching projects and requests for complex information. And you know, we can be frustrated for a few weeks with the decrease in staffing while we wait for the transition to take hold. But that for members of the public, that you do not see a reduction in service level and that the professional staff that remains is able to service you. So I leave the door open to email or contact any of your council people if you feel like something is dropping through the cracks or that something is not happening the way that it should. We always want to hear that feedback from you. And I know that sometimes, you know, you feel like you've mentioned it before, but especially during these four weeks, it's especially critical that we get that feedback so we can jump right in and grab the reins and if necessary and make changes so that we can keep the government functioning smoothly. With that, I will hand off to the mayor. And Mayor Deutsch, do you have any comments?
I'm very brief tonight. I just have the monthly report from Chief Gallagher. Couple of things to note that thefts in the borough are down, domestic disturbances in the borough are down. Things are quiet and I appreciate all the services of the chief, the sergeant and the rest of the members of the Narberth Police Force and thank you, thank them for their efforts. I also want to thank Matt West. You've been a pleasure to work with. And you've made my role easier and I just want to thank you for your hard efforts on behalf of the borough. And we'll miss you. We'll miss you. We wish you the best and know you're off to good things. So don't be a stranger. Come back and visit us once in a while and say hello and catch up. But I want to say a personal thank you for everything you've done.
Thank you, Mayor.
Aaron, I think you're frozen.
Aaron, you may want to turn off your video.
Back?
Yeah.
I'm back. That was weird. All right, public comment. Any member of the public wishing to comment now is the time. I see two or three. I'll start with Ira. Any comment?
No, thank you.
All right, Mr. Callen?
No comment.
And Carol Maurice Scanlon?
I have a question about the noise ordinance. What does that exactly entail? I was reading over the materials packets and it doesn't really say anything except there's going to be a noise ordinance revised. What does it, what are the penalties? What are the criteria, the parameters on the noise?
Sure, I'm going to hold that answer because I know that we're going to go through that in about two or three minutes. So then we'll do it. Great.
And then when is the painting starting on the north side? Is there a schedule for that?
It's going out to bid, so there's not yet a schedule.
Okay, is that how long, is that like this summer type thing?
Yes, when it's warm.
Perfect. All right, thank you.
Yep, thank you. Seeing no other comment from members of the public, I will close public comment. I'm going to move just a little item 6D. We're going to hold until after 8:00 PM because members of the Human Relations Commission would like to join us and they will be here after 8:00 PM. 6A, can I get a motion to pass the minutes?
Sure, I move the Borough Council for the minutes of the March 3rd, 2021 workshop meeting and March 17th, 2021 business meeting of Borough Council.
Is there a second? Seconded by Counselor Al Shacks. Any discussion on the minutes? All in favor? All right. Any opposed? Minutes passed unanimously. Schedule bills, Council Records?
I move the Borough Council approve the schedule of bills dated March 12th through April 14th, 2021 for the general fund in the amount of $194,365.75 highway aid fund in the amount of $6,897.24 sewer fund in the amount of $26,367.67 and solid waste fund in the amount of $52,15.5 to authorize the borough manager to pay all bills.
Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Bush. Any discussion on the schedule? Hearing none, all in favor? Oh, Mr. West has a comment before we vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to draw your attention to how different this motion is from previous motions in previous months. You're going to see that it's specific, that we've included in the motion the date range as well as the exact amount of the bills to be paid. This was a result of the 2019 audit being completed and this was a recommendation from the audit that they would, going forward, they would prefer a more specific value identified on the motion. So you should see that from this month going forward.
Thank you, Mr. West. All in favor? All right, unanimous. 6C, nuisances and the answer to Ms. Scanlon's questions.
Okay, I move that Borough Council adopt ordinance 1031, amending section 336 to B of the Borough Code. Nuisances to clarify provisions related to public disturbances caused by animals.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Great. All right, Mr. McGreevy, could you talk us through the sort of substantive changes? What does this mean to a member of the public, either on either end of the nuisance?
Yeah, so the changes are in section B and I can read that. It's one paragraph, if you like. These are minor changes to language in the ordinance that are recommended by the solicitor so that the nuisance code can be upheld in the Commonwealth Courts, in the PA Courts. So based on the solicitor's research, these, you know, small tweaks in the language make our existing ordinance a bit stronger if it were to be challenged. But there is no addition of time limits or new penalties. It's simply a change in the definition of the nuisance. I could read it if you like or?
No, I think that's inaccurate.
Okay.
Summary. Go ahead, Ms. Geiser. And for the benefit of the public, Rebecca is filling in for Mr. Walco, who has a scheduling conflict this evening.
Yes, thank you, members of council and members of the community. I did have an opportunity to speak with Mr. Walco regarding this ordinance. And specifically, this clarifies that ownership of the nuisance animal is not necessary for enforcement but merely possession or control of the animal. Second, that the disturbance can be immediately adjacent to neighbors as well as the surrounding community. So it need not be a neighbor that is directly next door. That the disturbance can be to persons on private or public property. And again, this would include the streets as opposed to neighbors next door. And finally, that the animal could be located within the private property and still cause the disturbance. So John felt as though this was consistent with the law that would be enforceable but was also consistent with how police would be able to enforce this particular ordinance for the public.
Thank you. Any questions from council members? Okay, all in favor? All right. I believe that is unanimous. Any opposed? None? Unanimous. Thank you.
If I could just move this move, I'm sorry, Mr. President, if I could just move a copy of the actual ordinance into the record in addition to proof of publication. Again, this was publicly produced in the Main Line Times, April 11th of 2021. And finally, we have the submission receipt of the proposed ordinance to the Montgomery County Law Library as required. And that was submitted on March the 29th of 2021.
Okay, great. Thank you. And thank you, Counselor Records, who just messaged me that I was conflating my motions and we can move to 6D. Ordinance 1032, who's got that under there?
I have that.
Thank you.
I move the Borough Council adopt ordinance 1032, establishing gender-neutral language throughout the Narberth Code per the attachment.
Second.
Geiser wants to talk. Oh, sorry.
Seconded by Mr. Bush. Ms. Geiser?
Yes, and again, I would just for the record move into B1 as ordinance itself and that would be ordinance 1032, establishing gender-neutral language throughout the Narberth Code. B2 would be proof of the legal notice for tonight's hearing and that was published in the Main Line Times on April 11th of 2021. And finally, B3 is proof of submission and receipt of the proposed ordinance to the Montgomery County Law Library as provided by the Borough Code and that was on March the 29th of 2021. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Any discussion internally, council members? Hearing none, we've discussed this, all in favor? All right. Unanimous. 6E.
I move that Borough Council amend the existing agreement between the borough and McShays to authorize the use of an additional parking space in the borough-owned parking lot located directly behind the restaurant for a total of nine parking spaces.
Is there a second? Seeing no second, this motion will not move forward. All right, thank you. 6F. Regards to selling borough property.
I move the Borough Council to adopt resolution 2021-09, resolution for sale of personal property of the Borough of Narberth a 2002 Chevy 2500 truck with dump bed, snowplow and salt spreader per the attachment.
Is there a second?
Second.
Council of Pananopoulos on the second. Any discussion? Mr. West, you could just tell us why this is coming to council. This is not a typical item for us.
Yep, thank you, Mr. President. So I don't know, a couple of you were around when we passed our resolution in 2017 authorizing the Borough Office to sell borough property that is?
You're going to have to cut off your video again.
Sorry about that.
No, it's fine.
Some of you were around in 2017 when we passed a resolution authorizing the Borough Office to sell borough property that doesn't exceed $1,000. That is in desperate need of significant work and we have made the we have made the estimation that the total amount of work that needs to be done far exceeds the value of the truck. Therefore, it was in the best followed resolution 2017-13 and we have had it on munisabid. It's a publicly bid platform. It's kind of like the eBay for municipal governments. And closing the closing bid after the bid that we are willing to accept an award goes for $5,000 to a buyer out of Indiana and Illinois. They will be picking up the truck at some point and they will be issuing a check if counted. Oh, I would just add that I would encourage council to use this $5,000 for reinvestment into the Public Works Crew. In my past three months, I've seen that is in desperate need of overhaul and significant investment. So I would encourage council to use this money to be a jumpstart in a vehicle replacement program. And we have a mini loader that is currently out of service. It needs significant repairs to the engine and this would be a good down payment towards that total cost.
Thank you for that tip. Appreciate that. And we will make a note of it. Is there any discussion, council members? Hearing none, all in favor? All right. Unanimous. 6G. Public health and safety, I believe?
Yes, I move that Borough Council adopt resolution 2021-010, approving an intermunicipal cooperation agreement regarding police services with Lower Mary Township per the attachment.
Is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Okay, any discussion? Well.
Aaron, this has been reviewed in committee with the chief over the past several months.
Chief, I just want to take a moment to thank you for working deeply in this. It is a long, complicated document and having being in my 12th month of council, 12th year of council service, I know how complex some of these intermunicipal issues are and the history packed into each one of them. And I was very pleased to see a very beneficial, mutually beneficial agreement for both municipalities that I think really speaks to the work that the mayor and yourself have done in the department to professionalize and improve over the past couple of years. And you see that confidence in the document and it's very much appreciated. And it goes a long way towards Narberth being Narberth. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. I appreciate that very much.
If I may, Aaron, I just also would like to extend my heartfelt thank you to Chief Gallagher for his dedicated efforts in creating this document, making it making it tight, making the adjustments that reflect our, you know, professionalization of the department and how far we've come. And I just, I really appreciate his efforts.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate that very much. Any other discussion? All in favor? All right. Okay, thank you. Motion passes unanimously. 6H.
I move that Borough Council award the contract for the 2021 Narberth Borough Road Paving Program to Innovative Construction Services of Fullcroft, Pennsylvania with a total base bid of $113,446.92 per the recommendation of the borough's engineer and per the attachment.
Okay, is there a second? Seconded by Mr. McGreevy. Any discussion?
I don't know if Eric's here and he can give us?
Mr. Johnson, go ahead.
Yeah, so as we've kind of reviewed previously, you know, a road paving contract is, it's a pretty straightforward contract. We had gone through and isolated the most in need section of road being Dudley Avenue, the 200 to 400 block of Dudley. We went out to bid and we received multiple, four bidders came in and a low bidder being at 113. We find this to be a reasonable price for this work, which includes the mill and overlay of the roadway as well as the ADA ramps along that stretch. And we have worked with this contractor before around the municipalities and found them to be satisfactory.
Thank you.
I should point out that $113,000 is a little bit more than we had budgeted, but you know, just kind of the way blocks work. You can't say, we're not going to stop in the middle of the block, so.
Right. Could I ask, Mr. Johnson, in your professional judgment, or I don't know if it's called out in the contract, the breakdown in costs between the road milling and overlay versus the actual concrete work for the ADA ramps? How does it break down amongst that $113,000?
How much the concrete, so the concrete work is a total of $20,000. So the paving work is $92,000.
Yeah, so you know, the concrete work is only about 10% of the
Correct, yes.
Of the cost. Okay. All right, thank you. Any other discussion, council members? All in favor? All right, unanimous. Great. Andy Charles from the HRC is joining us right on time.
Thank you.
So we will be with you shortly, Mr. Charles. 7A, Mr. Manager, do you have a report?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just in addition to the monthly cash fund balances and budget versus actual reports which were included in the meeting packet, I just wanted to take a minute to thank my time in Narberth. It's been a pleasure. It's been fun. It's been hard. It's been everything. And I've learned a lot and it's as my response to everyone who's been giving me well wishes has been that it's bittersweet. I have a lot of blood, sweat and tears invested in Narberth and Narberth will always hold a special place in my heart because of that. And I've truly grown to love Narberth. It is a unique little place that is just filled with amazing people and the residents are exceptional. And most even even more so, I just wanted to take a moment to thank the staff that I've been able to work with over these five-plus years. It's without you that, you know, without you, I wouldn't be where I am today. So it truly is a team effort and I appreciate that about everybody. That's not just direct staff, but that is the professional staff, Mr. Johnson, Kevin Walsh, Mr. Walco, all of the third-party consultants have certainly been a pleasure to work with. And thank you. And I'm not going, I'm not dying or anything, so I'm not that far away. And it would be great to have visitors to New Britain Township. So once this COVID thing gets under wraps, it'd be great to have visitors up our way too. Thank you.
Thank you for the invitation, Matt. You might jump on a Zoom meeting here and there. You never know. Keep our eyes on you. Mr. Ms. Solicitor, do you have a report?
Mr. Walco advised that he will be giving his report either later this evening, although the meeting is moving very quickly, so he may not be agreeing with us.
Unusually quickly for us, but.
Yes, yes. Well, he advised he would be giving council his updates on what he's been working on at the next meeting. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Monthly reports have been filed. Any comments for the good of council? Mr. Bush?
Sure, so primary election season is upon us. I just got my ballot in the mail recently. Let's see, there's going to be a Dropbox, drop boxes are being organized by the county. The nearest one to Narberth is going to be at the Luddington Library in Bryn Mawr starting May 1st. So until then, feel free to exercise your civic rights and vote.
And I guess I have a comment too. Wait, I'll wait till after Mona.
Go ahead, Mona.
Just actually piggybacking on what Fred said. I think, you know, it's important for the public to know that generally primaries are only open to Democrats and Republicans, but I think it's important for people to know that because there are ballot measures on this primary, it's also open to independents. So just to let our independents in Narberth know that you can also vote, you can't vote on offices, but you can vote on the ballot measures. And there are some pretty important ballot measures coming up. Oh, and also just to thank our fire department for, I know there was a pretty scary fire in Narberth in March that they responded to and several neighbors were involved and just thanking them again for their volunteerism and their service.
Thank you, Mona. And I think we are going to have some of the involved parties from that fire at the next council meeting. Have an opportunity to thank them for their impromptu service to the community. Bob, go ahead.
I guess I I guess I will say something. This is really off the top of my head, but and it's just an acknowledgement of how I've been thinking a lot about how much change is going on within the borough. And I was in actually a bank the other day and I overheard a conversation among some of the tellers and some of the patrons there about how, gosh, the Borough of Narberth is really things are not going well. We don't have a manager. We don't have, you know, things are, it's a big mess, you know? That kind of conversation. And I was thinking about how proud I am to live in Narberth and how much I love this town and how wonderful it is to work with this group of really committed residents on the council and how fortunate we are. I don't, I don't know that in my 10 years on council, I've ever seen such a committed group of volunteers and residents on the boards and commissions of the Narberth Borough Government. The extraordinary chairs in every single, on every single commission. I think the Shade Tree Commission is about to plant their 300th tree this coming weekend. The Human Relations Commission has just been working so incredibly diligently on bringing us to this issue tonight. The Civil Service Commission just recommended and we appointed a new sergeant. We have, we have an active planning commission that's just engaged in new, you know, development that and looking at how to protect open space. We have Parks and Recreation Board that's actively involved in making recommendations to the borough on the maintenance and improvement of the parks and open spaces. We have an incredible new sort of organization and administration of the Narberth, of some of the civic civic groups in Narberth. The NICE has new leadership and we got a wonderful request for funding from them recently. And you see the work they're doing in the parks around town. The Narberth Civic Association is doing really important work in bringing public forum to the community. I could just go on, but I just, I've lived here like most of my life or in the area most of my life. And I just, I love Narberth and I'm so proud of who we are becoming. And I think our best years are both behind us and ahead of us, but I think, I think we'll look back someday and say, these were the good old days, actually. And we'll think fondly of this time when things really rooted like sort of a new beginning for what's coming. So anyway, I just want to say that here on Matt West's last day here because he certainly played an enormous role in bringing us from sort of a previous time to the present. And anyway, thanks for all listening here. I just, I'm really looking forward to continuing this work together.
Yeah. I'll add to that, which is it's come to my attention away from the council table that the Fourth of July Committee has decided to hang up their hat. I know that the interruption of the pandemic I know that the interruption of the pandemic has been difficult for them from a fundraising standpoint, a volunteering standpoint, of future activities, what does the future hold? And I know that probably hits you like a thud, if you love Narberth, because that committee just gives so much to this community and creates so much activity. And it's the reason I moved here was experiencing those fireworks as a child. But I also have been positively, I wouldn't say surprised, but pleased at a whole new round of volunteers under a different sort of 501(c)(3) organization and that are actively working to take up those traditions and make sure that they continue for our community, even though they will be maybe run by different volunteers. I, I think to Bob, to your point, there's a lot of change right now in the borough in a lot of ways. But it, but structurally, strategically, it's positive change. And we are not allowing the future to run away from us. We are defining what that future is. We have control of it. And it can seem overwhelming, especially in a time where everything is topsy-turvy and upside down. For the Fourth of July Committee in particular, I'll let Cindy share some more details, but I am very grateful for the service that our community has received from those volunteers. And I'm very much looking forward to those fresh faces that can bring new ideas to old concepts and reinvigorate them and help guide us to the future. Cindy?
Thanks. So the Fourth of July Committee has given ourselves and our children and our families, gosh, years and years of memories. And it, they have earned their right to retire. That is, that is for sure. And we were just thrilled with the sudden interest in keeping those traditions that we all value so much. So Aaron Silvers and Ed Ridgway have really become thought partners and thought about how the traditions that we love of the Fourth of July Committee will fold in onto the larger umbrella of the Narberth Business Association. The Fourth of July Committee will be liquidating all of their assets. They will be selling off the games, the tents, the tables. I would like to propose that the borough try to purchase some of those games if we choose to. Perhaps the community can start a GoFundMe to, to purchase some of those games that we love and, and traditional Fourth of July banners. We can work all those details out, but know that we really are enhancing the breadth and depth of the Narberth Business Association. So I will ask, actually be asking the Finance and Administration Committee to look at, can we increase the amount of funds that we allocate to our Narberth Business Association, given really now this larger umbrella organization? So please look for that in our, in our next budget cycle. So.
Thank you. Mona, go ahead.
Thank you. I'm glad you brought that up because I forgot to mention that too. And I also would just want to give a big thank you to the Fourth of July Committee. For me also, some of my favorite memories with my children and with my neighbors are because of Fourth of July Committee events. And if we are going to buy something, I'm just going to put a plug in. I, I got to volunteer on the, the one with the hammer where you hit the bell last time. I think that's a great one we should buy. But I also wanted to take time, again, I know I've said this in maybe committee meetings or executive sessions or maybe even public council meetings, but I just also want to thank Matt West one more time because I truly think his work has been amazing. You know, he's been working two jobs and then three jobs, you know, for months now. And to just see his, Matt, your professionalism, your fast responses to emails from residents and Borough Council members and just the clarity with which you do things and the way that you work really well with so many people to resolve difficult issues. I mean, who, who could have foreseen the issue with the electricity, right? So you've just really, really done amazing work and I do hope this is not the end. I hope that we get to do some good collaboration with New Britain in the future. So thank you so much for all of your work.
Thank you, Mona. Any other comments for the good of council? All right, we'll move to eight new business and we have guests here from the HRC. I'm going to suggest the first new business item to be. Mr. Charles, would you like to tell us what you've been working on? We, we punted something over to you last month.
Sure, thank you. As I understand it, Emily Schreiner of our commission is also called in, so I want to acknowledge.
Hi, Emily.
Try to find a little better lighting for my call.
There I am.
We have done a couple of things in recent months. One is we've promulgated rules for the receipt of complaints. There have been no complaints, but we're ready in case someone alleges discrimination seed under the, the portion ordinance to failure. We were also, we've also had some listening sessions in recent months occasioned by the George Floyd killing and, and the unrest that followed it. And in recent weeks, we've been contacted by council about a pending resolution related to the use of the borough's facilities for, and, and making sure that the facilities are used in a way that does discriminate on the basis of gender presentation or gender identity. And we're prepared in the event of the passage of a resolution calling for us to do so, to assist the borough, work with Borough Council and with Borough Solicitor and Borough Council on writing rules or coming up with procedures. Probably we would advise on what to include in contracts that the borough has, where the borough allows people to use its facilities under an agreement, a license or a contract. And we would suggest language to include in there to make sure that there's an enforceable provision that prevents the use of the facility in a way that discriminates or excludes people based on those characteristics.
Okay, thank you.
Aaron.
Council members, I was going to say, Ms. Schreiner, do you have any additional comments? Or then I'll open up the council members with questions.
No, I'm just, I'm, I'm, I'm new to the Human Relations Commission. I'm, this is my first time in a borough meeting. Just so mostly just as a citizen, I'll say that I would love to see our community step forward in what I consider to be protecting the rights of children and all the people in our community, but particularly being a community that raises children beautifully together. I think that this is something that I would like to see as a community member.
Thank you. Counselor Rickards?
Aaron, I'd like to move that Borough Council adopt the resolution affirming council support for transgender, non-binary and gender non-conforming participants on borough property and through borough programs.
If that was a motion, I'll second it.
Seconded. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor? Oh, Mona, go ahead. Mona and then Michelle.
I just want to say this is a really important motion, I think, right now. And thank you, everybody who worked on this, because I think at a time when politicians are using discrimination to win votes by targeting vulnerable children and teenagers, it's horrible. And I think it's really important that Narberth is taking this stand and saying that we don't agree with discrimination and that we fully support all children in our community for who they are. So thank you for working on that. I really, really appreciate this.
Thank you. Michelle, you were going to say something? Nope. Okay, all in favor?
Hi. Hi.
All right, unanimous. Motion passes. Thank you, HRC members for your time. You're welcome to stick around.
Thank you. I'm, I'm going to put my kids to bed instead, though. Appreciate it. Thanks.
Any other new business? Mr. Bush, you, you had something?
Yeah, so this is a request I'd like to make to Planning Commission. So they had a, a recommendation in front of us relating to the, the number of units to apply to a multifamily building. And I would like them, they, I know they also have on their agenda a discussion of accessory dwelling units, which is, you know, looking at, you know, basically granny flats or any other extra units that are on, you know, in, in a single lot. We have several of them throughout the borough. They're not currently legal. They're, they anticipate looking into that and looking into how we can legalize and inspect and assess these structures and sort of bring them into compliance with Borough Code. And I would also like them to look at a, a possible density bonus for green construction. So looking at setting a, an easily verifiable standard, something like a passive house standard, where if a developer commits to a very energy efficient building, we would, you know, potentially relax certain provisions of the, of the code, make it easier for them to, to build as a reward for their, you know, for their enlightened stance. Basically, we can't mandate a lot of these energy efficient things, but we can offer incentives to developers to go ahead and go through with them. I think that these are other measures that are related to density within the borough. And I think it would be good to combine them all into one larger discussion. So I'd like Planning Commission to look at those two issues and bring us some recommendations, at which point we can consider their other recommendation about multifamily housing.
So I hear a motion to ask the Planning Commission to consider accessory dwellings as well as green building incentives.
Right.
That summarizes correctly.
Make a friendly amendment to your motion, which I support. In addition to, to examining the number of units in multifamily housing, I would ask that we, I would like for us to request that the Planning Commission also examine the lot coverage standards, the lot size requirements and sort of the lot width dimensional requirements that go along with multifamily housing. It's not clear to me that they've ever quite been in line with the housing form. And if we're going to be looking at changing the density of that housing form type, this would be an ideal time to reexamine all of the site standards that go along with it.
And I just, I go and I want to, Aaron, I want to, I'm really glad that Michelle brought that up. And, and I would second that. If Fred accepts that, I, I think that those, that whole bundle of issues together is really appropriate for the Planning Commission to look at all sort of as a, as a synthesis, because they're actually interrelated. I think they're interrelated parts. And some time ago, Fred was, shared with me an observation that he had about why, like just sort of speculating about, well, like sort of why we're seeing developers bringing sort of these, these duped attached houses, these, these single family houses. And I'm more, I'm wondering, Fred, if you'd feel comfortable just sharing that with the whole council? Because I think it's important for us to all to think, begin to think about, even as we ask the Planning Commission for, to look deeper at this issue.
Yeah, so it seems like there's a, there's a really strong incentive right now for developers to build specifically twins in certain parts of the borough. It's because the, the, the lot size limit is lower for twins. So you can build kind of more house on a, on a twin lot. So if you had the same property and it was a duplex, so it was, it was one lot, you couldn't build as much as if it's two twins, each of which have their own lot. So, you know, there, there are some quirks like that in the code. I mean, and the reason I think people are building a lot of twins is that our rules for twins kind of reflect the way twins are throughout the, the borough. Like if you, if you look at the, the minimum size requirements, you know, almost all of our current twins would fit in those, in those, have lots of that size, right? That's, that's how twins are usually built. But if you look at our single family housing or our multifamily housing, most of our single family housing is on non-conforming lots. The, the lots are too small to build those houses right now, according to our code. Most of our multifamily housing is on lots that are too small, according to our code, to build those houses. So I think we have, we have an incentive to build twins right now because the twins kind of reflect how these houses are usually built. So I would, I think something for Planning Commission to look at is whether some of these requirements could be relaxed, you know, for a, you know, we could say, okay, we would like to bring our requirements more in line with what, what actually occurs throughout the borough, as long as the developers, you know, also perceive with some efficiency improvements. That would be my recommendation and what I would hope to, to hear from Planning Commission. So that's a little bit of my thought process on this.
So trying to get a motion on the table that we can second and move on.
Okay. I think that, so the, let's see. Original motion, I move that we ask Planning Commission to look at accessory dwelling units, to look at and bring us a
Oh, I have it. Accessory dwelling units, green building incentives, multifamily dwelling number, lot size and lot coverage. Is that right?
I, I think we can just say lot size and lot coverage in general, and if that's okay.
Okay.
Site standards.
Yeah.
Sites.
And as it relates to, to multifamily numbers.
Yeah, in particular, as it relates.
All right, Rob, did you have something to add to that? Or can I go for a second? All right. Can I get a second on that?
I'll second it.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All right, all in favor of asking the Planning Commission to look into accessory dwellings, green building incentives, lot size, coverage and site standards with a focus on multifamily dwellings and the number of units? I, okay. I will, Mr. West, given where you are in your transition, are you able to communicate that to the Planning Commission? Or should I take that on?
I would, if you have it all written down, if you could forward it to me, I'd be happy to do that.
I will. Thank you. Okay. Counselor Panopoulos, I think you had something.
Oh, yes. Let's do this. Um, so is this in the form of a resolution or just a discussion item? How did you want me to?
Could, you could discuss it and then you could make a resolution.
Okay, all right.
See where the conversation goes.
What I'm looking to do is to sort of, to officially and publicly ratify our engagement of eConsult Solutions, which I think, just to make sure that everybody recalls or as everybody's familiar, they're a consultancy. They have fairly, you know, they offer a fairly broad amount of expertise, but specifically for us, they're very, very well known and very highly respected in the area of real estate, financial and economic analysis. And one of the things that I think we learned that, that came through to me loud and clear in our initial public meetings where we're talking about sort of doing some visioning on 201 Sabine Avenue, was that there are a number of members of the public that don't feel comfortable that, with what council has concluded about our present economic situation, like where we are now. If we were to maintain the status quo, what you might call like the base case, whether that is a tenable economic position over, over a time horizon, say a 10 or 20 year time horizon. And so having heard that, we thought that what we needed to do was to provide, provide the residents of Narberth with those numbers so that we can all be sort of starting from the same baseline and understand the base case scenario. And then we can move forward to discuss the property further with a common set of facts. And so all we're engaging them to do right now is a, is a pretty, pretty simple, not fancy spreadsheet based analysis, with sort of concise summary analysis of, of the base case of our present position at 201 Sabine Avenue. It's, you know, it's not, it's certainly not to exceed, I think, a $5,000. So we're looking to ratify that relationship and move forward. And at a future meeting, I would be able to, in a position to give council an estimate of, of the timeframe for that work. Does anybody have any questions about that? Okay, it's a resolution, it's a motion, it's a resolution now.
Right, okay. So it's a resolution. Someone with someone like to second it. Mr. Bush, any further discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
All right, any opposed? Done. Unanimous. Great. Aye. Any opposed? Done. Unanimous. Great. I had one item, but I'll go around the room and see if anyone else has anything.
I have an item of new business as well.
Go ahead.
New business. Okay. Um, I'm going to, going to say the idea that I'm going to make a motion and, and make a request. In, in, I've been thinking a lot about the, um, Fourth of July Committee over the last week, you know, as, as this news of their choice has begun, kind of been going around. And, um, and I've been thinking about the people I know and who I, the people I value who have been running the Fourth of July Committee for all these decades and how much their presence in Narberth has made our place what it is and, and how much they've loved Narberth and created all these incredible events that have gone on and on and on for years. And I was, I guess I wanted to ask council if we could maybe, I'd like to formalize a little bit of a process to think through how we might honor them in the coming year and say, it honored them in some way in the year 2022. So I'd like to us to begin to think through what that might be, whether or not we might allocate a little bit of money in our budget for 2022 towards creating, say, a kind of public work of art or maybe some kind of photo gallery exhibit, some kind of tribute, maybe a dinner. I don't, I, I don't know what it would be, but I'd like to begin to think through as a council, a gift for, um, the community in honor of the members of the Fourth, of the Fourth of July Committee and their contribution to Narberth over these many years. So that's the idea. I'd like to chair that project. And I'd like to have people on council who are willing to help me with that. And I'd like to, I'd like to ask the council if we'd be willing to think about putting some money into our budget for 2022 to do something like that.
I've seen nodding. So I'll ask for a second on the, this is sort of a general resolution supporting, um, council's involvement in, in honoring and, um, giving back to the community for everything that the Fourth of July Committee has given us. That could summarize. Seconded. Um, and with details to be determined, right? It's sort of a vote for, vote of good faith is what you, should you, should you do this? And the answer, uh, will vote.
And what it would be, yeah, and what it would be. And I think that would include some conversation with members of the, of the Fourth of July Committee because, because I suspect they may have an archive of photographs. And, you know, I'm thinking about the possibility of like, maybe we create some kind of permanent, like that we could fund, say, the creation of some kind of permanent archive of photos that maybe could go within the Narberth Historic Society. Or, you know, maybe we have a gala, you know, exhibit of their, of their archive and that kind, some, I'm thinking along those lines. Or like, you know, just like a tribute. I'm thinking of that photograph, that great photograph in Glenn Gray's office that I think maybe Aaron Luttrell took of, of the, of the ice cream, of the ice cream buffet at one of those events. And like, what an amazing, you know, tribute that photograph is of the, of the work of the Narberth Fourth of July Committee, because it's really like a celebration of the kids. And the Fourth of July Committee has always been committed to the children of Narberth and, and, um, you know, in the way that they funded Candy Cane City and, and, and really, you know, spent, you know, decades supporting the, the playground and that kind of thing. Anyway, I'm going on and on, but you see why it, I think it's important, especially at this moment of transition that we do something. So, yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Well, that's unanimous. So that was easy.
Could you have a question?
Ad hoc chair of the Fourth of July.
Okay. And suppose, could I do it? Council president, could I do it through and with the, um, with the permission of, say, the chair of the Finance Administration Committee? Could, could it be like a subcommittee of F and A?
Sure.
And would that be all right with you, Cindy?
Yeah, Bob, I think that makes, yes, I would love to be involved, um, with that as well. And I think that makes sense of when, you know, we can also coordinate when the Fourth of July Committee decides to liquidate their assets. You know, perhaps we, we can ask if perhaps the, the borough can be the, the first in line, um, to acquire those if, if we so choose. So we, we can work out lots of details in this transition. So that would be great.
Okay.
Mr. Bush had a question.
Yeah. Do we have a time on when the, that liquidation is going to happen? Do you know?
Um, I don't. I, I will email Bob, maybe the two of us, we can email, um, the Fourth of July Committee tomorrow and, and set out. I, I can tell you, um, I spoke with Dr. Gray. He's been very willing to share just all the, the lessons learned and contacts over the years with the new structure and set of volunteers. So hopefully we've got a, a timeline to you soon.
Thank you. Um, uh, my comments were just busy to put on everybody's radar that, that we've had a lot of conversations over the past year about open space. And, you know, it's a, it's a core part of our comprehensive plan, a core part of our, our open space plan, which is getting a little long in the tooth. Um, and different properties and developments and redevelopments, um, have all had a conversation component that is focused around open space. And so I just wanted to kind of throw out there for the community, but also council to, um, begin thinking at a very high level, whether, um, a more sort of comprehensive strategic open space initiative might make sense. It might be a way, rather than us, um, focusing on individual targets, but to think about, you know, what this community needs at a higher level. And maybe we could be bold in our thinking about how we might be able to achieve something. That's kind of all I wanted to, I just wanted to throw that out there because I want the community to understand that we are looking at these issues at various levels of altitude. And, um, you know, sometimes it's hard to be reactionary when a development proposal comes through because of the timelines involved. But if we can be more strategic, maybe we can achieve a result. So. Is there any old business? Hearing none, I'll take a motion to adjourn and then council will go into executive session to discuss matters of potential litigation.
I'll move to adjourn.
Moved Fred, seconded Michelle or vice versa. Um, all in favor? Aye. We are adjourned. Thank you. We'll clear the room and then begin our executive session.